Sometimes we flip a coin.
Good evening. The meeting of, a special meeting of the Monroe Township Board of Education will come to order. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
May we have a roll call, Mr. Gorski?
Certainly. Mrs. Arminio.
Here.
Mr. Chiarella. Mrs. Dimeo.
Here.
Mrs. Koloponovich.
Here.
Mrs. Lang.
Here.
Mr. Pelori.
Here.
Mr. Ryback.
Mrs. Siegel.
Here.
Mr. Tofano.
Here.
And Mr. Rutske.
Here.
Madam Board President, you have a quorum present this evening. In accordance with the provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law, the Monroe Township Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted February 1st, 2019, at all schools, the Home News Tribune, Cranberry Press, and filed with the Clerk of the municipality.
Thank you, Mr. Gorski. We'll go to number five on the agenda. It is recommended that the Board of Education suspend the operation of policy bylaw 0164 to permit the Board to conduct only one public forum at this evening's public meeting. Need a motion and a second? Mrs. Lang?
Oh, Peter got it.
He's seconding it?
Peter did.
Okay. Peter Tofano. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain?
I'll abstain on that one.
Ms. Arminio is abstaining. We cues. Okay, then, the motion carries, and we will only have one public forum. And tonight, we're here because we, as a Board, felt that we needed some training for the superintendent evaluation process, which is pretty new, and the superintendent search process, which we will be going through pretty soon. So we have with us tonight Kathy Weincoff, the field representative, or the field service rep from New Jersey School Boards, and she is going to help us through the process, and we thank you for coming here on a Monday night after the Super Bowl.
That's okay. I only watched it for the commercials.
Commercial?
Because my team didn't make it in, so I really wasn't interested.
Okay.
Good evening. As Kathy said, I'm Kathy Weincoff with New Jersey School Boards, and I cover the districts in Monmouth County, and I also have a handful of districts in Ocean County. And it took me all of 15 minutes to get here, so you're really closer than probably most of my districts that I go into visit. So, just a little bit about me, I've been with the Association for 12 years. Prior to that, I was a Board member for nine years, just right up the road in Millstone Township. So, you know, I'm pretty close by, and Mary Ann couldn't be here, so she asked me if I would pinch-hit, so I'm here to pinch-hit. And we're going to talk about the evaluation process. I don't know, I would assume that last year, whenever you did your evaluation, you used the previous evaluation that we have always used, and over the past couple of years, we have been revising the evaluation with the help from NJASA. So both our Association and the Superintendents' Association came together, and it took them about three years to go through the process to update the evaluation. You have a packet of information in front of you. The PowerPoint is on the right-hand side, if you want to follow through and make any notes, but the biggest piece that you'll want to be following is, this is the booklet for the evaluation process, and as we go through it, the actual document is contained within the booklet, and I like to tell my Boards to keep it close by for a handy reference. What has changed most of all in the new evaluation tool is part two of the evaluation, which contains the leadership standards. What we did, whenever we were going through the process, we looked at the professional standards for educational leaders that were formerly the ISLIC standards. We looked at evaluation tools from other states. We relied heavily on the job description that we have at New Jersey School Boards in our policy department with regards to the superintendent's job description. And I would say to you, especially the newer Board members, that you may want to get a copy of the job description of the superintendent, just to see what some of the duties and responsibilities are of the superintendent. We also used the previous tool that we had used, and more importantly, we wanted to make sure that the new tool that we migrated to was really consistent with what the Board's role is in the evaluation process. I will tell you, with my districts last year, of the 80-some districts that I work with, 63 of them used our evaluation tool, and a third of them used the new tool. And so, I was really interested to get a lot of feedback from them as to, you know, did they like it? Did they not like it? What did they like about it? What didn't they like about it? I will tell you overwhelmingly, superintendents liked the tool, as well as the Board members were really happy with it because it is now an evidence-based tool. So, as you're going through the process, your superintendent is now going to be giving you evidence, not only with regards to the goals, because the superintendent previously gave you evidence with the goals, but now for those leadership standards pieces, there will be evidence that the Board will be looking at as you go through the evaluation. And I think for brand-new Board members, because of the fact that it is now evidence-based, new Board members will feel confident that they'll be able to participate in the evaluation process because that evidence is going to be supplied. But there will still be the opportunity that if you really don't feel comfortable in those standards, that that "not observed" category is still there, and it's important to know that it's not a positive, it's not a negative, it's just indicating that, as a Board member, I've not experienced this in my Board member life to date, and that's no problem. You know, and it goes back to all about accountability, you know, what our roles and responsibilities are as Board members, and what the superintendent's roles and responsibilities are, using your goal-setting process, because when we do the goal-setting, that's where we get the goals that we evaluate the superintendent on. If you have a strategic plan, those goals are derived from that strategic plan. The superintendent should be giving you updates on the progress towards the achievement of the goals, and then, once you complete the evaluation of the superintendent, the final piece is for the Board to do its own self-evaluation. That really kind of rounds out that entire cycle. So if you look at the roles and responsibilities with regards to the Board and superintendent, you know, the big piece that I always tell my Boards is that they need to focus on the what. That's the Board's role. What it is that we want to have happen here in the district. And then, why do we need it? And how much is it going to cost? Because, you know, we have to be mindful and be fiscally responsible. And then, once we establish the what, along with the superintendent, he is then going to create your action plans to accomplish your goals, but then, he's going to, through the action plans, determine how your what is going to get carried out. When it's going to get carried out, and who in the district's responsible for carrying it out. And then, at the end of the process, the Board then comes back and evaluates how well the superintendent carried out the what you asked him to do. And we do that through the evaluation process. Goals for our new Board members, you know, we're sometimes working with four different sets of goals at one particular point in time. We have the Board goals, and those are owned by everyone, meaning, you know, the Board and the superintendent own those goals. We have, those can revolve around, you know, anything in the district, professional development, curriculum program, you know, finances, facilities, carries, covers a whole host of things that are going on in the district. The Board goals are owned by the Board, and those generally revolve around Board process and procedure, but the Board may have specific Board goals that will assist the superintendent in carrying out the district goals. So, you know, if a district's going to end up going through a referendum, for say, you know, like I have one district that's getting ready to, you know, possibly think about going out to referendum, so one of their Board goals this year was for the Board to get educated on the referendum process, the timelines, so that as they move forward with that initiative, the Board has an idea of what their responsibilities are all through the process. Then you have superintendent goals. Those are the superintendent's personal goals and his professional development goals, and the Board generally, you know, does not see what those goals are. The superintendent works on them on his own. The only time that the Board would be involved in the crafting of superintendent goals is if, in fact, something went kind of south in the evaluation, and the Board feels that the superintendent may need, you know, to get skills in whatever it may be. I mean, you know, it's not a good one to use, but the one that always comes to the top of my head is anger management. You know, the Board may say to the superintendent, "We really need you to go and get some professional development and work on this particular issue." And the fourth set of goals that you may or may not have are miracles, and those are contractual and are negotiated with the superintendent on an annual basis, and that does increase his salary if, in fact, those miracles are accomplished. Not all districts have miracles, but some do. Our governance cycle, so our goal-setting begins generally over the summer, whenever you formally sit down and you have a discussion and come to mutual agreement on the goals with the superintendent. Then, by September, hopefully, the superintendent has created his action plans to carry out the goals, has shared them with the Board, and then begins working on those, and then, throughout the year, he gives updates on the progress towards the achievement of the goals. You do the evaluation, you do your Board evaluation, and then we start the cycle all over again. With regards to the evaluation process, one of the more important ones in recent past is to make sure that you get the evaluation completely put to bed. It means all pieces of the evaluation by July 1st. Otherwise, you'll lose six points for CUSAC, and I do know that the executive county superintendents throughout the state are asking and looking for documentation in the district that that evaluation has been completed by July 1st. In the past, a Board could have done it in December, and it was no big deal. But the statutory requirement for that evaluation has always been July 1st. It's just that the Board has never been accountable and held to that July deadline until this past year. So, you know, there is a sample calendar in here on the left-hand side of the packet, and you all know we love colored paper, so it is the salmon-colored paper. And if you follow the timeline, the suggested timelines that are in this calendar, it will get you to that July 1 deadline. You know, you have to take into account, you know, how many times a month does your Board meet? Once or twice a month?
Once.
Just once. Okay, so you may have to push that timeline up a little bit in order to meet all of the benchmarks, or you may have to do like you did tonight, and when it gets to be the end of May or June, schedule a special meeting just for the purposes of completing that evaluation, and you can always do that, too. Because of the timelines to get this done, and if you see in the calendar, they really suggest that you start doing it late April, chances are, you're going to be evaluating the superintendent on the progress towards the achievement of the goals, because he still has May and June to finish up the goals. So, most often, it will be on the progress towards the achievement of the goals. And as I said, you know, the evaluation is in statute and code, has to be done once a year. The evaluation, the final evaluation, does have to be in writing. The Board and the superintendent meet in closed session to discuss the evaluation, and as I said, it's based on goals and objectives and those responsibilities, and then in code, you see where that July 1 deadline is there. And it's important to note that the evaluation, the final written evaluation, reflects the majority opinion of the Board. So if the majority of the Board has indicated that the superintendent is the next best thing since sliced bread, that's how the evaluation gets written. I'm probably dating myself by making that saying, I think. And, but that doesn't mean that that minority opinion goes away. The minority opinion that is contained within the evaluation gets expressed verbally to the superintendent at the summary conference. All right, I'm sorry, you'll have to, like, shout out your name.
Okay, no problem. Michelle Arminio. Real quick, the evaluation, the Board meets in closed session to discuss it originally, then we, without the superintendent?
Correct.
Okay. Then we go into our written evaluation, and then we review our, in another closed session, we review the results.
So what you're going to do is, and we'll walk through that process a little bit.
Oh, okay.
So, so if you follow this calendar, okay, one of the things that they've added with this new evaluation tool, so let's look at the middle of the calendar, where it talks about an evaluation pre-conference. That is something that we have added this year. It is not required, but that is the opportunity for the superintendent to give the Board one final update on the progress towards the goals before the evaluation process begins. And then, the superintendent will first access the evaluation, he'll go online, enter his goals, upload the evidence for the goals and the standards. Once he completes it, they put into the evaluation a 48-hour time lag, meaning, once he hits save and complete, 48 hours after that, each one of you who are able to participate in the evaluation will receive an email from NJASA telling you that the evaluation is ready for you to go in and for you to complete your portion. The reason why we put the 48 hours in is because we had quite a few instances where a superintendent may have gone in and entered complete, and then, a Board member may have started it, and a superintendent would say, "Oh, I forgot to add something really important," and then he's not able to go back in and access unless we wipe out all of that information for him to start back over. So this 48 hours gives him time to go in and make any last-minute changes to that evaluation. And then, you'll all receive notification. And then, you're all going to go in, and you're going to complete your portion, and then, once that gets finished, the evaluation is going to be compiled, once the Board President lets Mary Ann know that everybody has completed it and it's ready for compilation. Mary Ann does her magic, we all have magic, that we get it compiled, and then, we deliver it to the Board. Now, it gets delivered to the Board in one of two ways. The Board President can access it, download it, and then she makes copies for all of the Board members, and then shares it with you, or Mary Ann has our administrative assistant make copies for all of you, and then hand-delivers it either to the Board President, or sometimes the Board asks that we deliver it to the full Board in closed session, which we do. So, that is when the Board has this first executive session that is listed here at the end of May.
Kathy?
Yes?
When we do the individual members' evaluation, about how long should that time period be? Do we have a standard? Is there something?
No, it can take you as, as long as it needs for you to take there. The first time it came out online, they had in there a timeframe, and now, you could do it over several days. So, as long as you log out and log back in, you're going, it's going to bring you to the last place that you left off in that evaluation. So it's not like you have to sit down and do it all in one setting, you know, so you have time to, you know, come back. So when you meet in that first closed session, the superintendent needs to receive a rice notice for that meeting, and the Board meets in closed session by itself, the BA is not there, there's nobody there, for the Board to review the results of the compiled evaluation and determine what the majority opinion of the Board is. And then, the Board President, or the Board President, can assign some lucky Board member to write that final evaluation. So you're taking all of the information that you discussed at that closed-session meeting at the end of May, and you're coming up with a written evaluation. And then, you may determine that you want a second closed-session meeting for the Board to see what that final written evaluation looks like, before it's given to the superintendent. So I would also suggest every time that you're meeting to discuss the evaluation in closed session, you need to ensure that the superintendent has a rice notice. Then, when you're going to have the summary conference with the superintendent, he receives a rice notice for that meeting also, and then he will meet with the Board in closed session to discuss the evaluation. So what you should do is at least give the evaluation to the superintendent at a minimum five days before your meeting with him, so that he has the opportunity to read through the evaluation and thoughtfully come up with any questions that he may have about the evaluation. I mean, I can remember the first time I was on my Board, I mean, I felt sorry for our superintendent, because the Board President, we came into the meeting, she gave him the evaluation, and she said, "Here, sit here and read it, and then we're going to discuss it." Well, that's not fair to the superintendent, because he's just looking at it for the very first time, and you know, sometimes you need to read, come back, and read it again, and then be able to thoughtfully come up with any questions that you may want to have with the Board. So then, once you have that, that final summary conference, which would most likely be at your last, your meeting in June, and you have that summary conference with the superintendent, the Board President signs the evaluation, the superintendent signs the evaluation, and it's also important to note that just because the superintendent signs the evaluation does not necessarily mean that he agrees with it. He is signing to say that he received it. And then, he has 10 days after that to attach anything, or if the evaluation is such that he needs to write a rebuttal, he can write a rebuttal to the evaluation. And I have had some superintendents do that, and when, when the superintendent attaches anything, he has to let the Board know that there's been an attachment to the evaluation, and in most of my districts, the attachment that gets added to the evaluation are student performance test scores. The, you know, the ones that they do, you know, that they may do in-house at the end of the year. They may attach that to the evaluation. If there is something attached to the evaluation, as I said, the Board's entitled to see it, you cannot remove it. And then, a copy goes to the superintendent for his personnel file, and the Board is to retain a copy also for their records, and what most of my Boards do is they give it to their Board Attorney to keep in their permanent file. So, I mean, that's, you know, following the calendar, but, you know, as I said, you know, that pre-evaluation conference is really, you know, that final update, and so you'll see, the goals assessment piece is not much different than what it was in the past. The other thing I should talk about is that the other thing that has changed in this evaluation are the actual ratings. So if you look in your booklet on page four, okay, you will see, you know, what part one is going to look like. And this booklet will be updated, but here at the very top, where it talks about remarks supporting the rating, there will be an added box in there, and that's where the superintendent is going to upload links to the goals, so you can go in and check his progress towards the goals. That way, you won't have that great big long litany of superintendent comments, because he'll be able to add links. But then, here are our new scorings. You'll see exemplary, proficient, area for growth, unsatisfactory, and not observed. So those are the new, the new ratings that we have. Here's the new standards. We're going to mission, vision, and core values for standard number one, governance, ethics, and professional norms for number two, so you'll see what those six new indicators are. As I said, here's the ratings. Now, this happens to be for standard one, and I would caution you to please make sure that you read the definition for the rating for all six standards, because they are slightly different standard to standard. So that's the other piece that has changed. Here is the sample resources. So this will give the superintendent an idea of some of the resources that he can provide as evidence to the Board, and for the Board to be aware that this may be some of the evidence that you are getting with regard to that particular standard. And then, the links are provided by the superintendent. So for you, those links are live links that are going to direct the Board back to your district, your district server. So, the hint that most of my superintendents that have gone through the new tool said that they were going to be using for this year is, they're doing, most of them are using Google Platform, they're creating one folder that says Superintendent's Valuation, and then, inside that folder are subfolders, one for each goal, so if there's four goals, and then the six standards, so there could be 10 subfolders in there, and then you're able to uplink as, as the time goes on, the evidence into each one of those folders. So that, it could potentially be that the link that you're providing is just to that one folder, or you could put the links to the individual folders, however, however, it's best for you to work out with your IT department, so that that link then will get the Board to wherever it is that they need to be to get that information. And this is the other thing that has really changed. So let's see, in this booklet, that's on page two, where you see the mission, vision for standard one, you see the ratings, and then, there are indicators underneath, so this is only showing four of them. So this is only showing four of them, there's more than four. So you're going to go through and you're going to mark your boxes for each indicator. But what the new evaluation now is requiring you to do as a board member is, once you get that standard done, is for you to go back up and look at your individual ratings for those indicators, and then make an overall assessment, and you'll see it down at the bottom of the page, for that overall standard. So this will kind of take away from, you know, a board member putting exemplary, proficient, 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 and then giving an overall unsatisfactory rating, kind of takes that away, because you're looking at those, those indicators, where you mark them, and now, you're directing them towards the proficient area, which will assist Kathy, or whomever is writing the evaluation, to come up with what that majority opinion of the board is for that particular standard. That kind of takes away a little bit of that guesswork. Then, the last thing that we've added that my superintendents absolutely loved was the CSA summative evaluation template. And that is on page...
10.
Page, it starts on page...
On 10 here.
13.
13 here.
On page 13. So what will happen is, the board president will have access to this document. And it, it will allow you to copy and paste from the compiled evaluation, because the board president has access to it, the comments from board members versus retyping everything. And it will then be standard, so district goal, you know, you would just kind of fill in the blanks with regards to the template. You would, you know, copy, put in here what the goal statement is, you know, where the board members, the majority of the board landed under those ratings, and then supporting remarks, you'll be able to copy and paste those remarks that support the majority opinion of the board into this document. And so you'll do that for each of the goals, and then each of the standards. So this becomes pretty much performa across the state, that if a board is using our evaluation tool, this is pretty much what that final evaluation will look like. And then, at the end, there is an area for the board to put any overall comments that you may want to put in there. For instance, you know, we would like to thank the superintendent for the tremendous amount of work he did in improving test scores in the district, and whatever else you may want to include in those summary comments. Again, that template, so, you know, then what comes up next is, I mean, because that's pretty much the whole process, the whole new process. So, you know, the superintendent, like I said, will go in, enter everything, once he hits save and complete, 48 hours after, you'll all receive an email, do you have any board members who are conflicted from participating? That means any board members who have family members who work in the district.
I don't think we do this year.
Okay. So that means then that all of you should be able to complete the evaluation. And then, you know, once you're all finished, then it can be compiled. Now, the other thing that they've done, Kathy, is, you know, Mary Ann and I are kind of sticklers, oh, this probably shouldn't be taped.
Too late.
Too late. But here's what we do. Generally, what happens is, once I, I get notification that one of my boards has completed the evaluation, because when you get your notification that the superintendent has completed the evaluation, I get one also. I follow that up with an email to the board president saying, I've received notification, the superintendent has completed his or her portion of the evaluation, can you share with me your timeline? And then, I start annoying the daylights out of my board presidents, because then, I generally send two emails a week. I usually send one on Friday, and then on Monday or Tuesday. On Friday, the email says, as of today's date, no board members have completed the evaluation. And then on Monday or Tuesday, because that's when most board members do their work, I would send an email to the board president and say, oh, by the way, as of this morning, one board member has completed the evaluation. So when I do that, that means then that my board presidents then annoy the daylights out of all of the board members and says, oh, I received an email from Kathy, she says only one board member has completed the evaluation, please get it done. But with the new system, in addition to Mary Ann being able to check the status, the board president will be able to go in and see who has and who has not completed the evaluation. I still follow up with my boards, because I do not want the executive county superintendent from Monmouth County, who I happen to know very well, call me up and say, Kathy, what happened with X, Y, and Z board that they didn't get their superintendent's evaluation done within the timeframe? So I try to keep everybody on target, because I don't want to receive that phone call from the executive county superintendent. Yes?
Sorry, Michelle Arminio again. When you say that the board president can go in, can they only see who has completed? They can't see the evaluation?
They can't see the evaluation. They will be able, because what happens is, even I can't see, I mean, if I, you know, if something came up and a board member's evaluation needed to be wiped out, because every now and then, we will get something from a board member that says, you know what, I really made a mistake, is there any way for that evaluation to be wiped out? I mean, I gotta dance through like, a lot of hoops to get our IT people. So, I mean, I don't even have access to the individual board member's evaluation. I just see a list of names of every board member, and it tells me the date and the status. So it may say, you know, part one is finished, but part two is not done. Part one and two are finished, and if you've hit the save and complete button, it will tell me the date and the time that you completed the evaluation. So that's all she'll be able to see. And then, if she, so say she decides she's going to download the evaluation herself and make copies for the board to bring into the meeting, and you decide you don't need Mary Ann to bring them in, and you don't need her to walk you through the process. Although, with three new board members, you may want to have her come in and just go over that process for, you know, getting it completed so that you're all sure of what your next steps are. She's the one who's supposed to make the copies of the evaluation, she can't give it to the BA, she can't give it to a secretary to make copies, she needs to be the one to make the copies. Because, you know, it's, it's kind of hard to ask one of the employees of the superintendent to make a copy of his evaluation for the board. So the board, you know, the board president would need to do that. When you meet in closed session to discuss the evaluation, she hands out copies of the evaluation to all of you. When you leave that meeting, she's gotta collect all nine of them, because they can't go home. They can't, you know, and then, once the evaluation is completely finished, those compiled evaluations should be shredded, because that compiled evaluation contains both the majority and the minority opinion of the board, and it's a working document for the board to be able to review and come up with what that majority opinion for the written evaluation is. Are we good so far? Okay. So, you know, for those of you who have done the evaluation in the past, this tool, accessing it, is no different than the previous one. You'll go on, oh, and I don't like the way they told you to go in there. So, I'm gonna give you a shortcut versus this one, because instead of going to field services, you know, the drop-down menu for field services, all you have to do is scroll down to the very bottom of the page of our homepage. And on the bottom, it says CSA and board evaluation resources. And you click on it, and it takes you right to where you need to be to complete both the superintendent and the board evaluation.
And so that's the same spot it's always been, right?
Same spot.
Okay.
Same spot. I like shortcuts. And then, if you have your password, if you have a current password with your district email address, you are good to go. And if you don't have a password, you should get a password, and you can go onto the website, and under board information, you just go in, your user ID is your district email address, and then you create your own password. And then, make sure you write it down, because that password gets you into all areas of our website that are password protected for board member information only. So that part is, is really no different. You know, and then, you know, kind of to wrap this one up, you know, it's not a once-a-year process, it's something that's ongoing. You all need to, you know, develop some kind of assistant, a system for you to have your own evidence to use for the evaluation. So, most often, what happens is that board members will use the last thing that kind of went south in the district, and use that as a basis for the superintendent's evaluation. Not really fair, because it really needs to encompass the entire year's worth of work. So what I did as a board member was, I had a notebook that I called my evaluation notebook. And I used it for both the board evaluation and the superintendent's evaluation. And anything that I thought I might want to include in the superintendent's evaluation, I would jot it down. It might even be, you know, a page from the meeting minutes, from a report that the superintendent gave, just so when it came time for me to do the superintendent's evaluation, I was doing a thoughtful evaluation that encompassed the entire year's worth of work. And then, that means that the biggest piece, that my boards, if you talk to them, that they tell you that I am unyielding about, because there are some things that I am unyielding about, and that is comments. There is an area of the evaluation under each goal and each indicator for the board to include comments. And so, if the superintendent is doing something that is spectacular, you should note that in the comments. If something really did go south, you should include comments, so that when it comes time to do that summary conference, if something went south as part of the minority, can have a discussion, there was a minority opinion, and it was around this one particular issue, and here are some of the things, the feedback that came from the board. You know, because if he's doing something really well, he can use those skills that he's doing really well in that one particular area to address something that maybe he needs some assistance in. So that's why that, those comments are important. And not only that, it makes it much easier for the person who ends up writing the evaluation, that there are comments to include that doesn't make it look like the comments are coming from the person who's writing the evaluation, because there's no comments there. Because that's not fair to the person who's writing the evaluation either. So, you know, when it comes time to do it, you, you make a note, Kathy was unyielding about this, I have to include comments. You know, and you can't say, and even for the board evaluation, don't say that the board is doing something wrong, and then don't include comments. Because what I say to people is, if somebody says that you're unsatisfactory, or you need improvement in something, and you don't include a comment, I would disregard it. Because if you just give an overall rating of unsatisfactory or needs improvement, and you don't have any comments there, how are they supposed to know what to fix? They don't. So that's why that's important, and it goes for the board evaluation too, because it's very easy, if you happen to be the minority on the board, that you're gonna go through and say that everything the board does is just really not good, just because. But if you're gonna say that the board needs to improve its skills in some area, put it in comments, so that the board is able to, you know, kind of reflect, to see, do we need to make this a goal and do something to address it, or, or not? How can we fix whatever that issue happens to be? So then, in that same area of the evaluation, the first section is for the superintendent's evaluation, and the, and the bottom couple of areas in that same area are for the board's self-evaluation. And then go in and do the board, do you usually do a board self-evaluation?
We didn't do one last year, but we did one, I think, the prior two years.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a good thing, you know, it's, it's a good thing to do, because I think sometimes it gives us, you know, a perspective, you know, on the board, especially a board leader, about, you know, what kind of direction the board is going in. And as I said, it really helps drive your board, your specific board goals, but there may be something in that board evaluation that may have to be translated over into, into a district goal, depending on, you know, whatever it is that the board may put in there. And so, the board evaluation has not changed, yet. It's gonna be down the road, but not for a while. We need to make sure that this one is up and running. So that's really the board, you know, the superintendent and board evaluation process. So I don't know if you have any questions?
For the board evaluation, when do we start the period? Is there a time period, one-year period? When does it start then?
No. So there's no deadline for the board evaluation, so whenever the board determines that they would like to go in and do it, is usually what they do. Most of my boards that I deal with like to have the evaluation for their summer retreat. And they go over it, and they use that, like I said, to develop their board goals for, for the upcoming year. Some, you know, sometimes my boards will, because you can access the board evaluation anytime. The superintendent evaluation just opened up. So the superintendent can go in now and begin to create the folders, you know, start to upload evidence and stuff so that they have it for, for that particular timeframe. You know, so there's not really any specific deadline to get that done.
Kathy, you said, just clarifying one thing, in the written summary, only the majority of the, the majority of board's opinion is in...
Opinion of the board is included in the written evaluation.
Okay, so, and then, but the other part can be discussed verbally?
That's verbally. And, and some of that sometimes is how the board determines that they want to go about doing it. You know, for some reason, I have, you know, some board members that may feel, you know, may be in the minority and feel that the superintendent's not doing such a good job, but they themselves don't want to bring it up. But to me, if you're gonna say somebody's unsatisfactory and needs improvement, and you're the one who, who wrote the comment, to me, you gotta own it. You know, but if you don't, I have other boards that when they're coming up and doing that majority opinion at their meeting, they're also making notes about the minority opinion, so that the, the board president may be the one at the meeting to say to the superintendent, you know, I just want to make you aware that there was a minority opinion in the evaluation, and here's what it was, and here were some of the comments that were made. You know, and, and I would encourage you that if there is a minority opinion, that you express it to the superintendent, before it all of a sudden morphs into a majority opinion, and he had no idea all along that there may have been issues... and he had no idea all along that there may have been issues, so that, you know, the first time it comes up, you know, he can reflect on what that minority opinion is, and begin to address some of those issues, so that it doesn't continue to grow. Anything else? So that's the new superintendent evaluation. So for the superintendent search process, I do not have a power. So I don't know if-
We could do that. Somebody wanna make a motion for like a 10-minute recess?
I make a motion for a 10-minute recess.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Tifano, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we'll take a 10-minute recess. Okay, at this time, the board will move back into public session, and we will go on to the next presentation, which is the superintendent's search process.
Okay, so you all have a little booklet in front of you. If you open up to page one, you know, I always like to start off, when I talk to my boards, to say, our process is geared more towards board function. So, we're your association, we work with you to ensure that you get the best candidate based on your criteria for the district. And as I sometimes thoughtfully like to say, you know, one of our big pluses is that we ask our candidates to provide a comprehensive application form for us, so that as your field service person, we're able to go through those candidates and come up with a checklist of things that you're looking for in your candidate to ensure that any candidate that we bring to you meets your criteria, what you're looking for in a superintendent. With me, you know, I'm probably the one field service representative who has worked with my districts for the longest. So I've been with the association for 12 years. So I've worked with the districts in Monmouth County for 12 years. So over those 12 years, I've really gotten to know my districts. So that when it comes time to assist them with their search, I'm able to go through the candidates and make a determination whether they're gonna be, number one, a good fit for the district, a good fit for the board, and meet the board's criteria. And, you know, our process is not for the faint of heart, because it is comprehensive, it is time-intensive for our board members. We, depending on the level of search that you use us for, really makes a determination on how much work you as a board need to do. You know, our process is all confidential, you know, and we do get good results. And I'm here to tell you that, you know, our candidates are responding to your search, not, you know, putting my resume out and saying, "Put me in whatever district you're gonna go to, we work for you." Where sometimes I think outside firms have candidates that they're looking to place in a district, where we wanna make sure you get the best person for your district. We've got a lot of experience, all of us, that are in field service. You know, we do talk, there's nine, there are eight other of me, which is either a good thing or a bad thing. But we talk to each other with regards to candidates. For instance, you know, somebody may call me up and say, Kathy, this person is from one of your districts, what can you tell me about them? So that we're doing outreach among each other, you know, to get feedback on candidates before we bring them to you. Our recruiting, we do what we call flexible recruiting. We don't do, go out into a district and pull one superintendent from another, from one district and put them into another. Although, if there is a candidate, you know, that comes and asks us about a particular search that we're running, we would encourage them to apply for the search. But, you know, I don't go and pull superintendents from districts, because I have relationships with all 60 districts in Monmouth County. And it would be a little hard for me to pull the superintendent from a neighboring district over into another, and then continue to have a good working relationship with the board. So we do send letters out to candidates if there is, you know, a search opening, and somebody has asked to be on our list of noted, you know, people to be notified. We do let them know ahead of time, before the ad hits the paper, that your district has an opening. And we provide, the biggest piece that we do is provide training through every step of our process. So, you know, if you hire us, we come in and we meet with the board, and we go through an exercise to get your criteria, what you're looking for in a superintendent. 'Cause in the end, the board is the only group that can hire the superintendent. Superintendent's your only employee. It's the only direct hire that you have as a board. And so, we would sit and meet with you, come up with what your criteria is, have you fill out paperwork, so that we can get, come to consensus on what the criteria is that you're looking for. We help you develop an ad. And then we have an ad agency that we use that places the ads, depending on where you want to be, where you wanna advertise. Still, you know, being old-fashioned, and it's not old-fashioned, but the newspaper of record for education across the state is still the Star Ledger. So if you wanna find out all of the openings across the state, you're gonna go to the Star Ledger to be able to find them. Although, I will tell you that anymore, one of the biggest, one of the places that everybody goes to is our website to see what openings are out there, and that would be for any district that's doing the search on their own, or one of the searches that we are doing. So if you hire an outside consultant, somebody else, we will not put your ad on our website. And then, we would meet with your staff and your community, so to do forums, you know, do forums with them, to go through the process, share the calendar with them. And then, we have, you know, about five questions that we ask them to find out what your community and staff are looking for in a superintendent. And then we use that as we're beginning to build our rating form that we will use to score all of the candidates who apply for the search in. Staff members are not part of sitting in on the interview process with our process. There's not many places out there that allow employees to hire their boss. And so, we get any information from them. We ask them, you know, to share questions with us. So I will use any community questions, I share those with the board, and I include those in the interview process, so that, you know, those community and staff questions are asked to any candidate. And, you know, then, you know, we deliver a fully, a full pool to the board, so you get to see, if you get 100 people that are applying in your search, you get to see all 100 applications. We have them ranked as those who, you know, we rate them as A, B, and C's. The As are those who exceed your criteria, Bs are those who meet your criteria, and sometimes candidates don't meet your criteria. But you're able to see everybody who has applied in your search. And then, make a determination as to who the majority of the board would like to bring in and interview. We help you develop those interview questions, because one of the things that we do through our process is to ensure that it's a legally defensible process. We have our legal team that, you know, if questions come to us that somebody wants to ask, you know, during the interview process, we run those questions by our legal department to make sure that they are, in fact, questions that we can ask during the search. Our labor relations department will come out and assist you with contract training, if you would like, to ensure that, you know, your contract meets all of the standards that are to be met. I mean, pretty much anymore, the contract is what it is, there's not a lotta extras that boards can include in those contracts since the advent of the accountability regs. And then, you know, we provide pool reports to the board to let them know what their pool looks like. And then, as I said, we process all of the applications. You know, if you get 100 applications, I read all 100 applications. And I look at all of those applications, and I line them up with all of the criteria that the board has established, you know, to help you make a determination as to whether it's somebody that you want to interview or you don't wanna interview. And then, after the new superintendent starts in district, we come in and we can do a transition workshop with the board and the superintendent to talk about expectations, expectations that the board may have of the superintendent, and that the superintendent may have of the board. And then we help you in developing those goals for the new superintendent, once they come on board. Any questions before I move to the next part? So if you go to page five, it really lays out our four levels of search that we have. And if you start at the right-hand side with the $4,000 search, even though it's the least amount of money, that one is more time and labor-intensive for the board. Because if you look, you know, that I would still come in, you know, we would, Mary Ann would still come in, meet with you, get your criteria, help you put the ad together. And then, the applications would come in, we would review them. We would bring them to you, hand the applications over to you, and let you run with it. Then you can review them all, you can determine who you wanna bring in, do the interviews, we will help you with some questions for interviews with that particular one, but that one is mostly the board's responsibility. The biggest, the other thing I wanted to tell you is that advertising costs are in addition to the cost of the search. I think the last time I did a search, I think the advertising ran about $3,000, I think, yes?
Are we still telling our names? Michelle or Mimi?
No, Michelle, you've told me your name three times.
Three times, so you get me now?
I got you now.
Okay. The advertising, how long do we advertise for?
And I would say to you, it depends. Usually, what I do with them-
Minimally, at least.
Is, is they advertise one week, we lag a week, and then advertise a second week. You know, so there's a week in between. That gets you a little more exposure.
I think what I'm talking about is overall. I mean, should we advertise, like, for, I mean, people, one week to me does, even two weeks doesn't-
No, because then, you advertise, and then, when Mary Ann comes in and sets the calendar with you, there will be a cutoff time for applications, and it generally is a month.
Okay, that's more, more like.
Yeah, yeah, you know, so between the first-
The first time that I advertise and then cut off the applications is generally a month. Because I figure if somebody's gonna complete an application, a month, I hope, is plenty of time for them to go in and do it.
But how long does it really take for the word to get out in the educational arena?
Not long at all, not long at all, because in addition to the advertising, I mean, we send out notices to all 21 county roundtables. So it goes to every county office to let them know that there is an opening in Monroe County.
Now, is that cost also?
No.
Okay, so the advertising that you're discussing is like news-
It's just for like the Star Ledger.
I'm sorry, I talk with my hands, I'm really sorry. So-
Oh, I see.
So, but if you're gonna, you know, and that also, if you're advertising with the Newark Star Ledger, that gets you also on to NJJobs.com. We also do, and it just went right out of my head. There is a website that's just for, is it NewJerseySchoolJobs.com or something? We advertise on that. We use, we put your advertisement on our Facebook page-
Okay.
-that gets out to everybody. So, I mean, there's a lot of advertising that doesn't cost you anything. And I will tell you, depending on the district, districts down in the southern part of the state, they only advertise on our website, and they're getting good pools of candidate. You're a larger district, you may wanna do outreach, because if you're considering candidates from out of state, chances are, they're gonna go to Newark Star Ledger or the website that's attached to them. I mean, there are all kinds of places that they'll be able to do that. I've even had some of my searches do national advertising through Education Week, but those were districts that were really, you know, open to bringing somebody from another state in.
And is AppleTrack just for teachers and other staff members? Or does Apple-
No, we use AppleTrack, so all of the candidates fill out the application through AppleTrack.
Okay.
So that's who we use. And then, you know, we bring all of that information back to the board.
Thank you, okay.
Moving across, the $7,000 program is our traditional search. So if you've used our search before and done a traditional search, that is what that level is. And that just adds on to the fact that, you know, I'm bringing in, you know, the pool of candidates. I schedule all of the interviews. So all of the, all of your interviews, I set up a schedule, and I set up all of the interviews, I help you with the questions. And I mean, so then, we would come back after your first round of interviews. So if you interview three nights, and your last interview ends at 10 o'clock at night, we're here to meet with you and process out after that first round of interviews. We help you, you know, come to consensus on who you're gonna move to the second round of interviews. We help you develop questions for second round of interviews. We, you know, schedule those interviews, we come and meet with you, hand off the interview questions prior to each round of interviews. We would come back again at the end of the second round of interviews, and then you could make a determination whether you have a candidate you wanna hire after the second round, or do you wanna do a third round of interviews and give them some kind of activity to do? And it depends, you know, some boards, by the end of the second round, know who they want, and some like to go the added mile. And I'm sorry, you all-
Andy, Andy Plorey.
Andy, okay.
A couple of questions. Is the board required to go through the NJSBA for a super search, or can the board do it by themselves?
You can do it by yourself, you can hire an outside consulting firm.
Okay. If you don't mind me asking, Kathy, it looks like we did this in 2014, do you know what level that we went with?
For the last superintendent?
Yeah.
We went, started with school boards, and then when we had to do a second search, we went with a search company.
I see, okay. And do you know which level that we went with?
What do you mean, which level?
Out of the four.
Oh, I think we went with level three.
You did, yes. You did a premium search with the-
Yes.
The one that would be with the 12.5.
12.5.
The difference between that and the seven is that-
Yeah, 3D. Yeah, 3D model.
We, meaning Mary Ann, Mary Ann, I get to push it off, she would do all of the first round interviews. And then she would come in and give the board, you know, those candidates that she interviewed, and, you know, help you, and kind of say to you, based on your criteria and my interviews, here are the candidates that I would recommend that you interview. But just because she recommends somebody doesn't mean you have to interview them. And if there's somebody else in the pool that's an A or a B candidate that maybe she's not recommending, you can bring them in to interview. Mary Ann, if we need, if.
Kathy.
Kathy, now you said Mary Ann. That's okay, no, but I told her, Mary Ann and I are like very best of friends, she's like my sister from another mother, so I won't be offended if she calls me Mary Ann.
Thank you, Kathy. If, so, we talked about the advertising cost and where you would send out the information, you know, even out of state, but what if we want to hire from within first? Like, if we want to take just an internal search first? How does, is there rules against that, or are there?
No, no, if, so, you know, there's two schools of thought with regards to internal candidates. One, you can put an internal candidate through the process just like any other candidate. Because that will give you the ability to look at that candidate along with other candidates in that pool. And if in fact that internal candidate ends up being somebody that you moved through the search process, by putting them through all of the steps that you're putting an external candidate through, helps the board to validate their appointment in the district. Because too often what happens is a board will appoint, just not go through a search process, and they will just appoint an internal candidate. But then there may be backlash from your stakeholders that they come back and say that the board did not do their due diligence to see if there was another candidate out there who might have been better for the district. So that's a conversation that you, as a board, really need to have as you move through the search process. I will tell you, in the 12 years that I did on my board, we appointed two superintendents, and see, there I am with my hands again, one, we went through a search process, one, we just appointed an internal candidate. And the board got a tremendous amount of flack from our community by just appointing that internal candidate, because our community was going, was changing during that time, and they really felt that we did a disservice to the students by not looking to see what other candidates had been out there. You are Peter, are you Peter?
Peter Tifano. I have a question for Kathy. So in 2004, we spent $12,500 for this program.
In 2014?
2014.
It probably would have been less, it was probably $10,000 when you did it that time.
Okay. So you said that we spent the money on this program, and then we had to use an external program besides this?
We did the search, we did not find a candidate that the board, there was even a consensus from the board.
So this program didn't find that candidate for us?
Did not find the candidate, and so we decided, when we decided to do the search over again, the board decided to use a search firm.
Okay. So I'm going the opposite direction. I'm saying that if, first question to you, Kathy, is if we don't engage NJSBA, are we still, as a member of the NJSBA, be allowed to post the position on your website?
As long as you do the search on your own. If you hire an outside consultant, no. But if you do the search on your own, yes. So, you know, and I will tell you, one of the things that I do at the association is I track superintendent movement across the state. So I will tell you, the average length of time that a superintendent is in a school district, anybody have a guess?
Seven years.
No?
Three.
Three. Three. Is the average year, the average amount of time that a superintendent is staying in a district. Yes.
Do you have a study as to why that's the case? Because that statistic is meaningless unless there's reasons. And sometimes boards want to get rid of their superintendent after three years, sometimes superintendents leave for greener pastures or retire.
So whenever I track these, I go through all of the searches, whether it's a search that we did, a board did it on their own, or an outside consultant did. And I track also the reason why they leave. I will tell you that the majority of movement that I, we have been seeing is that superintendents are leaving smaller districts and going to larger districts. We have some superintendents that, you know, are at that retirement age, and the salary cap, even though its purpose was to hold taxes down in a district, we've lost a lot of superintendents to out of state because there are no caps in other states. I just had two superintendents in Monmouth County who left, one, well, no, not technically true, he left Monmouth, went to Edison, was making a lot of money, a lot more money in Edison, but then he went to South Carolina where he could make even more money. I had another one that ended up going out west. So they are leave, and, you know, so some of it are in pockets, like up in the northern part of the state, you've got superintendents leaving districts there and going across the border to New York, or they're going to Connecticut where they can make more money. Down in the south, southern part of the state, they're going to Pennsylvania and Delaware and Maryland where they can make more money. So that salary cap kind of put a little bit of a problem for us, I think, as far as keeping superintendents.
But are those people leaving the state generally retiring and then going to another job?
No, they're retiring and going to be a superintendent in a district out of state.
That's what I, that was the question?
Yes.
So in a sense, there's an incentive, okay, we can talk about that the cap is a problem, but there's also an incentive to get a second salary. It's not just that the cap is our issue, it's that they're gonna be able to collect their retirement pension and then.
Be a superintendent making more money in another state.
Right, so I doubt it, I, and maybe you can correct me, but the people who are leaving the state, are they, are they leaving before retirement age or after?
Before.
They still are?
They've, they've put in their years for retirement here in New Jersey. I mean, the one who just.
No, but that's, my point is that.
Right, they're young, they're young.
Right.
And they can, they have enough years to collect pension in New Jersey.
Right.
And go to another state and make more money, and then staying there long enough to end up with a second pension.
No, I got that, but that's sort of my point. We're not seeing any 10-year or not eligible for retirement superintendents going out of state unless it's really a huge compensation, right? They're not forfeiting their New Jersey pension to go to other states. Okay.
No.
So to just say that it's, you know, I think we have to be clear that there's an incentive to get a double, you know, double dip.
For people who are moving out of state, but for most of the superintendents where that move, where the movement is occurring within state, they're leaving smaller districts and going to larger.
Yeah, okay, that makes sense.
So as far as you're concerned, I mean, your district is a larger district, which should make you more attractive and get a pool of candidates who are seated superintendents in smaller districts who may have experience as a superintendent to come into district. You know, but, but what I would say too, okay, is sometimes it's not always necessary to hire somebody with superintendent experience. So, and I can talk from my biggest success story. My biggest success story is now the Commissioner of Education, because I did the search in Asbury Park that brought him there to district. And he was a principal at Carteret High School. Now, a lot of times boards would say, well, that might not be somebody that we would normally consider. But go back to the comment that I made to you about knowing my districts. And I know that district, I've worked with that district. And I will tell you this, they did one of our premium searches, I knew the very first time that I interviewed him that he was the candidate for Asbury Park. Why? Because he had all of the experiences that those students in Asbury Park have experienced. So after hearing his story and knowing what the board in Asbury Park was looking for, I knew from the first interview that he was their candidate. Now, I will tell you that it took seven interviews with the board before they hired him. So it's not always an easy guaranteed process. And not everybody is going, you know, you're not gonna know, sometimes, that the first time that you meet a candidate, that they are the right person for your district, but I think if you ask the right questions during the interview process, that you will find a candidate, you know, that's gonna meet the needs that you have here in the district, then it could well be an internal candidate. You know, but then I would say to you, you have to be very mindful about how you, how you go establishing your criteria, that it doesn't cut out that internal candidate. You know, so one of my colleagues was doing a search in one of their districts that is part of their criteria. The board said the candidate needed to have a doctorate. So once you say that a doctorate is required, that cuts out a tremendous number of people in your pool. And there was an internal candidate that the board was really interested in hearing from who didn't have a doctorate. So that cut that internal candidate out of the pool. So what the board ended up doing was they closed out that search and redefined their criteria in order for it to be more inclusive, to allow for a larger pool. Because the more requirements that you add in your criteria, the smaller your pool becomes. And so sometimes that's what having somebody from our association or a search firm is able to kind of help you with, to ensure that you're gonna get the broadest pool available for you to be able to narrow down those candidates. Is it 100% guaranteed that the person that you're gonna hire is gonna stay here? No. The other thing I tell my boards all the time is this, you think that you're interviewing them, but guess what? They're also interviewing you to make a determination as to whether you are gonna be a fit for them. And that doesn't always happen. And unfortunately, you know, sometimes things happen that create a problem the whole way around, is you've got candidates who are applying in multiple searches because they just don't apply to Monroe Township and say, that's it, that's the only district I'm applying to. And they're applying in other districts, and, you know, nothing happens and nothing happens, and they come here and they let you know, this is the place I want to be. But when that job comes up that they were really, really looking for, we're gone. But that's not your fault, it's not the consultant's fault, it's the candidate's fault. Because, because to me, it's like, if you're applying for this job, you need to want this job as much as you want the job down the street. You know, because I want somebody who's interested in coming to my district to be the superintendent. And as a consultant, I want a candidate that's gonna come and stay in the district, if it's only for those three years, that, you know, that, for that average length of time, and actually accomplish what you're gonna tell me you're gonna accomplish during the interview process. So I think, you know, some of it depends on what it is that you, as a group, are looking for. And I wouldn't discourage you, if you really think, you know, that your internal candidate is the person, and you feel that you have the ability to do the search on your own, go for it. But just be mindful, it is a confidential process. And so when you have those interviews, candidates' names shouldn't be getting out. You know, because if you're out sharing candidates' names with anybody or their name gets out there, you in turn may be creating a problem for them in the district that they're currently working in, especially if they're a seated superintendent. Because if you're a board and you have a superintendent that you love, and all of a sudden you hear that the superintendent is interviewing down the street, it's gonna make me, as a board member, think, well, does he really want to be here? If his name or her name is getting out there. So the biggest piece about this is it has to be confidential. Those applications need to be locked up, that the only people who have access to them is the board. And that those names don't get out there, because it is really critical that it does remain a confidential process. So with the 12-5 and the 15, we do the first round of interviews, and we sit through every single interview with you. So is your interviewing candidates for first round? If you're doing three consecutive nights of interviews, I'm, Mary Ann, not me, Mary Ann is sitting here, three consecutive nights, listening to each interview that you're going through, first round, second round, whatever. So that one is a little more time intensive on our end, and the difference between the 12-5 and the 15 is at the end, after the superintendent has kind of transitioned into the district, we do a strategic plan with the district. Patty?
Kathy? So my question, as you're saying, it's a confidential process and you can't share candidate information with the public, so when can we involve the public, or to what level?
With our process, the only time and opportunity that this public has is whenever we do the input sessions with them.
Okay, so the input session, and then.
Because in the end, in the end, it's a board decision. Because you, nine people, and five of you, as a majority, can appoint a superintendent. And the difference between you and them is that if you involve the public any point during the interview process, they don't have to maintain confidentiality. You can say, well, I'll have you sign a confidentiality agreement, but it's not legally binding.
So I guess where I'm confused, we've seen in the past where superintendents or people trying to get a job do, like, a public presentation at board meetings.
That's usually at the very end of a search. But let me ask you something, that's, because I'm gonna play the devil's advocate. You've gone through a search process where you've, you have interviewed this candidate one round, two rounds, three rounds. You have a preference that you all have come to agreement on. You bring two candidates to a forum. What if the public decides they like, you like candidate A, and the public likes candidate B? But you know through the interview process, the candidate A is the best candidate for your district. Public likes B. And then, at a board. And then, at a board meeting, the board appoints Candidate A. What do you think the public's going to say? So, I tell you to be careful, okay, about having those public forums, because the public may end up forcing your hand to hire a candidate that you felt the other candidate was better. So, I, I tell you to be careful. I will also tell you that I had a superintendent in one of my districts last year, who was a final candidate up in Essex County. They had a public forum, his name was out there, and guess what happened? His board decided they weren't renewing his contract, because they felt he was looking anyway, so why should we renegotiate his contract? So, if I'm a superintendent in another district, and I have had superintendents say to me, if you're doing a public forum, then I want to withdraw my name. So, you have to be careful about those public forums.
I think I was asking more because I know our public has requested often to be included in the whole process and know everything that we're doing, but what you're basically saying is, no.
We get their criteria, we get their input. And then, what I do for my boards is, at each benchmark in the search, I will type up a report and give it to the superintendent that, I'm superintendent, to the board president, that they can read at the, at the meeting. So, for instance, after, you know, I've, I've received all of the applications and I've run through them, I do a pool report, kind of indicate, you know, 100 candidates applied in this, you know, 100 candidates accessed the application for your search process. Of those 185 completed the application process. Of those 85, 80 were from New Jersey, one was from Pennsylvania, one was from New York, wherever. And then, I then list, okay, here, this is how many are superintendents, this is how many are assistant superintendents, I go down through the list, here's how many hold doctorates. And that information can be shared with the public at a public board meeting. You're not given names, but you can share the me- And so, then, after the first round of interviews, you could say to Mary Ann, okay, we're ready, here's the ones we want to move to the second round. You could give, you know, an update at a public meeting that, you know, the board had first-round interviews, and we interviewed, I don't know, 20, 25 candidates? And of those 25 candidates, we're going to move 10 to second-round interviews. You know, there's nothing wrong with just giving them facts through the process to keep them updated on where you are in the process.
Kathy, one thing, Andy Polore again, one thing that you kept referring to throughout your presentation is whatever the board decides, board has a right to appoint. That's, given the fact that we are a united board, but it's simple majority counts at every step of the way?
The superintendent needs to be appointed, I think, by a simple majority of the board. It's not a majority of the full membership, I think it's a majority of the board.
No, I think it's a majority of the full membership.
I, I think here, we have 10 members.
Oh, okay.
And we needed six.
Six, okay. So, where's your 10th member from?
Mr. Rutske, he's a, we're a receiving district, and we get kids from Jamesburg, and he's a Jamesburg representative.
So, learn something new every day.
Yes.
Okay, so you would need six.
Yes.
Yes. Michelle?
Okay. Now, so, the only people receiving actual names and candidates and applications should be-
The board.
The board. So, no, even if we hire a search company or anything, we should not have applications going either to the business administrator or the human resources?
No, we tell them to send them to us. Every now and then, we do get somebody who figures they'll get a leg up if they send them directly to the BA. And if that happens, then the BA generally will call us and say, I received blah, blah, blah. And then, I would get in touch with the candidate and say, I understand that you sent a resume package to the board office. Please go onto ApplicTrak and fill out our application, because through our process, you get more than just the application. You get the application, you get references, you get, we check to ensure that, you know, the candidates, if they have any postgraduate work, are getting them from an accredited school. You get their most recent evaluation. For, you know, for superintendents, generally, we tell them, you know, we want your last three. However, with everybody going to Danielson and everything, getting three evaluations ends up being way too much paper. But, you know, we, we get all, you get more than just an application, whenever you're going through, you know, and the application process, you know, and, and I get to the point where I, as I said, I look at every piece of paper that somebody submits, and there is nothing worse, nothing worse, than to go through an application and you say, this is a great person, this is a great person, however, their cover letter has the wrong school district on it. And it happens. And I sit there and say, I'd love to recommend this applicant, but I really can't. Because if they can't have, pay too much attention to detail to ensure that their paperwork is correct, what does that tell me about the work that they may do in district? So, I mean, I'm looking at all kinds of things as I'm reviewing that application to ensure that you're getting good applicants that'll apply in your search process. And, and I will tell you, Mary Ann is really on top of things. I mean, we take, we both take OCD to the next level, just saying, as far as applications go, which is not a good thing to say, but I figure you're hiring me for my expertise, that I want to make sure that the candidates that I'm bringing to you meet my standards. If they don't meet my standards, then, you know, I don't think they're worth bringing. I mean, and that's part of what you're paying us for, especially whenever you start hitting that 12 to do that premium search. You know, so, I, you know, I just think it's, you know, it's really important. There is on page six, a sample calendar that we use through the process. And then, on page seven talks about the no-cost advertising placements where we send all of our applications. And then, you know, and then there's colleges that we send applications to, I mean, so, you know, you're getting them all over the place. And, you know, then, the list of the most recent searches. I will tell you, when I look at my list, there's not a lot here from Monmouth, because I had an enormous turnover when the salary caps came into play. And so, once, and all districts in Monmouth, except for two, changed, they all changed superintendents. And most of them, other than the few listed here, have stayed in their districts. So, that's our process. Any other questions?
Since for three of us who are the new board members, it's the first time-
So, why the three new board members? You're new, who else is new? You said you were new, oh, okay.
So, all of us, every board member gets to interview, is that correct?
Yes, unless you're conflicted, but nobody's conflicted. So, you're all in on the interviews. So, you know, that brings up, you know, a good point, because there are some boards, I haven't seen it, but I've- who will use a search, that will do committees. And I'm not a fan. I'm not a fan of board search committees. Because I really feel strongly that if you need the majority of the board to appoint a candidate, that every single board member needs to be involved in the process to hear all of the interviews, the responses, to hear what everybody else is hearing, in order to make the best decision for your school district. I mean, I, I mean, that's my personal preference. You have to have a lot of faith in a committee, you know, to make sure that they're asking the right, you know, the right kind of questions and the same kind of questions that you would ask. So, you know, I just really think it's important for everybody to be involved in the process. No more questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Where are we? We are at the public forum. And anyone from the public wishing to speak, although I do not see anyone in the public. So, if anybody wishes to speak, please come to the microphone and give your name and address for the record. And seeing no one, our next scheduled Board of Education meeting will be on February 13, 2019, 7 o'clock PM at the Monroe Township School District. And, and just before I conclude that, I think at that next meeting, we'll have a more in-depth conversation about where this board wants to go, so that we can have the conversation and have everything ready by, you know, hopefully, the end of June. So, motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Wow, there was a lot. Ms. LaZang, who's second?
I second.
Second by Mr. Tifano, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Love.
Meeting is adjourned.